Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color Guard, post the colors. Color Guard salute. Two. Color Guard dismissed. Audience at ease.
Thank you so much. I will now defer to the Secretary for the roll call vote.
Good evening. Councilmember Anderson?
President.
Councilmember Anstead?
Here.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wolf?
Present.
Mayor Sylvester?
Yes.
Mayor Sylvester, you have a quorum.
Thank you. There is no closed session was held this evening, so there's no report. We'll now move on to the approval of the agenda. Will the maker of the motion and the second to approve the agenda state your names?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, Deborah Klein Lopez.
City Councilman Chris Anstead seconds.
I will now defer to the Secretary for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead? Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval of five to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving on to our presentations. So, this past year, the city had an unbelievable support through sponsorships at all of our major city events. It was unlike any other year. So this evening, I want to take a moment to recognize not only major sponsors, but all sponsors we've had throughout, sorry, those nights, throughout 2025. Whether you supported an event financially or donated giveaways, your contribution truly made a difference in making these events special and possible. While we continue with the presentation, you will see up on the screen are the sponsors from both the Summer Concerts in the Park and Raise Adobe Days. Thank you to all of you who became a sponsor. And tonight, we want to recognize two sponsors for going above and beyond in 2025. First, DIY Home Center. Not only did they sign on to be the Summer Concerts in the Park Platinum sponsor, but they also jumped on board as a sponsor for our amazing drone show, which I know we all loved. They were the perfect partner, and the community was really happy to see their support. They have also, and this is really exciting, they've also agreed to extend their Platinum sponsorship for the 2026 Summer Concert in the Park series. And we're absolutely thrilled about that. So I would like to ask the store manager, Michelle Barowski, to please come up and accept this certificate. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you for your generosity. This is very kind, and look forward to seeing you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And second, we want to thank Seccon Dental, a wonderful community partner. You got really involved with sponsorship this year. You joined on as a title sponsor for this year's Raise Adobe Days, as well as a goal sponsor for the Concerts in the Park. You have extended your sponsorship to be the title sponsor for next year's Raise Adobe Days. So thank you so much. If I can ask Sandeep and Navjot to please come up and accept this certificate. And who would like to say a few words?
I just want to thank Mayor Penny, councilmembers, all the staff, and the residents of Agoura. At here, at this point, I want to recognize the main heroes. Those are our patients. If they were not here, I would not be here, Seccon Dental would not be here, and we will not be able to support any of the sponsorships. So I want to recognize my patients, and thank you all for supporting us. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. You know, we love this community, how they welcome us, we made great friends here. It's our way of giving back to the community. So thank you for everything you guys do, and it keeps us going. And, you know, we are here for our passion. She loves dentistry, and I love sporting and working side by side with her. So thank you, everyone. May God bless you.
I'm slipping up here. Okay, also, on, but finally, although they are not here tonight, which is why I forgot, we wanted to send a special thank you to Kona Ice. They are one of our food trucks at the Concerts in the Park and Raise Adobe Days. They unsolicited donated over $1,000 to help support community events in Agoura Hills. On behalf of the city council and city staff, I would like to thank all of the businesses that you see listed up there that supported our wonderful community events this year. It's partnerships like theirs that truly make Agoura Hills events wonderful and special. Thank you. Okay, we are now moving on to Intergovernmental Special Purpose Committee and Departmental Reports. And I will start with an update from Supervisor Lindsay Horvath's Field Deputy, Daniel Vicente. Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you. Long time no see. Thank you so much. My name is Daniel Vicente. I'm the Lost Virginous and Topanga Field Deputy for Supervisor Lindsay Horvath's office. I'm still getting into the cadence of how to do these. We love all of our Lost Virginous cities, but you all have your council meetings the same night, so I have to be selective about when to give quarterly updates. So this is, I believe, is my first one. So I have a few that I'm going to go ahead and run through. First off, it was nice to see you and the Mayor Pro Tem today at the, at the open house that we had at the One Stop Center. So, uh, thank you for being there. We really appreciate it. As federal immigration enforcement actions escalate across Los Angeles County, Supervisor Horvath is doubling down on her support for immigrant communities through direct relief and support. The Board of Supervisors approved Supervisor Horvath and Solis's motion to launch a nearly $30 million emergency rent relief program, including targeted support for immigrant households facing income loss due to raids, along with wildfire support targeted for folks who were fire-impacted as a result of the Eaton and Palisades fires. Eligible households can receive up to six months of assistance, not to exceed $15,000. And this is not just for folks in unincorporated areas. This is for folks in all of our communities in Los Angeles County. The next update that I have here is the Supervisor, Supervisor's landmark reform of Los Angeles County's homeless services system is moving full speed ahead with the official launch of the new Unified County Homelessness Services Department set for January 1st of 2026 and the recent appointment of the new Director for Los Angeles County's Department of Homeless Services and Housing, Sarah Mayen. A new department, this new department will be built on success. The new department will scale the county's Housing for Health program, the most effective model system-wide, which last year helped nearly 7,000 people into interim housing with 37% exiting to permanent housing. In a time of limited federal dollars, we are trying to streamline and stretch every dime possible. Unfortunately, what we have seen from Lasso right now is a lack of accountability for the dollars that we are putting into the system. So the county is removing its nearly $300 million investment and investing that into a new county department of homelessness. Sarah Mayen, who is the current Director of Housing for Health, has been appointed to lead this new department. She brings decades of experience in managing an over $875 million budget, as well as 600, 600-plus staff. We have full faith that she will lead this department well and that she will be a great partner for the board and, uh, and carry the accountability that our communities really deserve to see right now in our homeless services system. I could add a whole lot more to that, but I won't. I'll move to the next thing. As the federal shutdown threatens access to CalFresh benefits for nearly 1.5 million Angelenos, Supervisor Horvath is driving urgent action to, uh, to protect access to food and basic needs across Los Angeles County. Due to the government shutdown, CalFresh benefits will be delayed for the month of November, and CalFresh recipients will receive notification from the state, beginning, several weeks ago they began receiving notice, informing them that November's benefits will be delayed. CalFresh recipients should understand that receiving such a notice does not mean that their case is terminated and that they are no longer eligible for benefits. It is important to encourage CalFresh recipients to continue complying with all reporting requirements to ensure their benefits are issued promptly once they become available again. Food banks across the county are stepping up to meet the need. Constituents can visit lafoodbank.org or call 211 to find a nearby food distribution center. The county is also giving a $10 million, it has, is also giving $10 million to the LA Regional Food Bank to give additional food to their 600-plus partners across the county. In response to rising need and federal uncertainty, the Supervisor, as well as Supervisor Hahn, advanced a motion to strengthen the Office of Food Systems. And what this does is that essentially has all partnering departments appointing a single person within their department to liaise within the community to allocate resources around food support for constituents. Supervisor Horvath, as many of you have seen last month, declared a state of emergency around immigration in Los Angeles County. We neighbor the San Fernando Valley, and in our district, we have nearly the entirety of the San Fernando Valley. This has been the most targeted area in the country for immigration actions taken by this administration. And so the Board of Supervisors issued a proclamation of local emergency for these federal immigration actions. And what this allows the board to do is to streamline dollars and coordinate faster to deliver services to our communities that are being impacted by this. It is wrong. The Supervisor, every day, has heard stories of people who are scared to send their children to school, of people who are scared to go to work. And this is not only a human issue, but it has overarching issues on our economy. And we are hearing from business owners every single day who are distraught by this. We do have some upcoming events in our office. As many of you know, we have just passed Emergency Preparedness Month. We were grateful to see many of you at the Calabasas Emergency Fair that we had just up the road. We also had our Emergency Preparedness Fair in Topanga. We will be having another Emergency Preparedness event on the 16th at the Skirball Center. So that'll be this Sunday. So if you want to brave the rain and come out to that, we will have food, and it will be a good time. But you will have to deal with LA drivers in the rain, so I apologize for that. So we look forward to seeing you there. That will be 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, if I'm not mistaken. You can also find a list of all of our events, lindsayhorvath.lacounty.gov. And thank you again to those of you who came out today to support our One Stop, our One Stop Center Open House. This will serve the same purpose as our old one. We are integrating more services into our regional planning, public health, fire, as well as our public works departments that are there. We're grateful to all of our partners there for the extended work that they've been doing in the aftermath of the Palisades recovery. And some other news, our office will be moving. So our office will be moving a little closer to Agoura Hills. We're going to be right across the street from the Lost Hill Sheriff's Station at 27001 Agoura Road, Suite 260. And that will be in the next 10 days or so. So very exciting. And the last thing I will leave you off with is that the Supervisor looks forward to seeing you next month at the reorganization where she will be swearing in Mayor Pro Tem and the new Mayor Pro Tem, and also thanking outgoing Mayor Sylvester for all of her incredible work and her partnership this past year. Thank you, guys, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much, Daniel. First of all, would you please thank Supervisor Horvath for all her support to our district over the last year?
Yes.
We really appreciate the partnership, and it is a real partnership. When we call, you listen.
Thank you.
So we appreciate that. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to say? No. So thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you, guys. I'll see you in another quarter, but you'll see me before then, obviously.
Thank you so much. Okay. I will now defer to Councilmember Klein Lopez for the Clean Power Alliance update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was actually a very interesting and long Clean Power Alliance meeting. I was sorry to have to miss our State of the City because our meeting went so long, but we had a very interesting conversation with the Assistant Fire Chief, Richard Stillwagen, and the Executive Director of the California Energy Storage Alliance, Scott Murdisaw, because we were talking about battery storage. The, all of our solar projects now, you know, we always incorporate battery storage because that's the way you manage the load to match the need of the community. And as you have seen over the last few years, we've had less and less brownouts and stresses on the grids because we have increased our battery capacity so much throughout California. And that said, there are also, with, with every energy system, there's always risks. And so there have been some incidents and some high-profile incidents on battery storage facilities, most notably at Moss Landing up in central California. So we had the Fire Chief and the Executive Director of this amazing organization, Common, talk to us about battery storage safety and, you know, what the new codes are, what the new makeup is of this battery storage, because when it was first implemented, it, it looks very different from the way it is now, so that if there is an emergency, there are new, better, faster ways to extinguish a fire or maintain any type of damage. So it was a fascinating meeting, and I think it was really important for our Board to understand the benefits and the risks and the, you know, the permitting process so that when these product, when these contracts come before us, we feel comfortable understanding what we're getting into. In October last month, we also welcomed three new cities to Clean Power Alliance. They flipped the switch, if you will, La Canyada, Flint Ridge, Lynwood, and Port Huaynimi. And also, we took the next steps to welcome two new cities, which I mentioned before, but now it's on our agenda, is Cudahoga and Fillmore. And when they join next year, that will make 40 cities, well, 38 cities and two, the two unincorporated areas. So we're growing, we're, we're doing well, we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. And it was a great meeting, and again, I was sorry to miss the, the event, but thank you for understanding that I was working on behalf of the city. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, we did miss you, but you can watch the video. Do we have any reports from staff? Seeing none. Are there any reports from City Council? Lovely. Moving on. We're now moving on to public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items that are not listed on the agenda, that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. If you have something to distribute to the City Council, please do not approach the dais. Hand your item to the Secretary, and she will distribute it to us on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the City Council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor Sylvester. We did not receive any written comments, however, we do have two speakers this evening. Juliette McGinnis, followed by Jennifer Miller.
Thank you. Juliette, would you like to come up? You will have three minutes to speak, ending when the red light appears on the podium. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. It's our first time. You can tell by the way we sat down too soon after the Pledge of Allegiance. But yes, it's good to be here. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, and everyone here for giving us this opportunity to speak. Wanted to come and just address something that has been a concern for us. There, there has been a lot of discussion in many different forums around e-biking and potential new ordinances and, and laws, and obviously, we all, we all know about this. So I wanted to come and speak as a mother of an e-biker and express some ideas and some different perspectives. One of the things that we care about the most is, is safety in, in our community and honoring our children and giving them a safe space. But we also want fairness and respect. There has definitely been unsafe riding. We all know about this. And this is being addressed and, and should continue to be. We all want safer strait, streets and behavior. What I'm concerned about is the tone of the conversations that are happening on different forums, Nextdoor, Facebook, our local newspapers, and directly to our youth is very deeply concerning and toxic. I think we're shifting not from a discussion, and it's turning into hostility and public shaming. My own child has had, has had a floodlight shine directly in her face multiple times when riding legally and yelled at. She's been screamed at standing next to her bike with a group of friends, had adults put phones in her face this close and threatening to call the police, and that's not safety, that's intimidation and harassment. So I think there needs to be a space where some of the name-calling is happening, and you see it in print, hooligans, gangs, reckless, I won't swear, but there's a lot of things there to say. And we need to shift the conversation. There are other communities, some e-bike smart programs called Bike People for Bikes that give some education, and Orange County, I think, has an e-bike sense safety, more engagement and conversation and not blame and persecution.
Oftentimes, if you could wrap it up, because your three minutes are up.
Oh, okay, yes. Sounds good. Is there anything you want to add?
I just think everyone's profiling us. Like, they see me in the street and they record me for just riding my bike on the right side of the street, going the speed limit. And I'm just profiled because all these other kids are really bad at riding, but I'm good and I do what I'm supposed to, but I get harassed for doing nothing and by the police, too.
Thank, thank you for coming tonight. Because this is public comment, it's not on the agenda, we cannot respond to you tonight.
No, that's fine.
But what I would like you to do is to give your name to one of our staff members. When the Subcommittee is going to be meeting to discuss the e-bike regulations, and then we will also have an open, public meeting, and we would love you to come and, and talk then as well. So if you could give your name to one of our staff members, and then they'll be able to reach out to you when those are going to be happening.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
So thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Miller, followed by Jesse Kaplan.
I'm back.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Actually, I met Juliette in the park and her daughter, and I had run into their, into some kids on bikes, and it, it got heated and bad language was used by all. And Juliette showed up, and we had a very cordial conversation and a very nice conversation. Everyone apologized to everyone. And what I said to them was, this is not personal. This is, I don't hate kids, but I have an issue with, you know, obviously, what's going on. Amy knows, and I also wrote to Kelly, emailed. I almost got hit twice. On the, above Franciscus, which is off Canwood, there's a pathway going up that leads to Rainbow Crest and Forest Cove, and there's, it's a cir, you know, it goes around a corner. I've been walking there twice and almost got hit by a bike. And I'm concerned, I'm going to be 70 in two weeks. If I break a hip, if I get hit by a bike, just FYI, and this is not coming from TikTok, this is a fact, elderly people, of which Agoura Hills has about 23% that considered elderly population, if hit, if broke, if break a hip, if a hip gets broken, have a 30% mortality rate in the first year from pulmonary issues, from the anesthesia, from the surgery. So not only could I break a hip, but I could actually die if I get hit by a bike. So of course, I'm concerned. I'm, my question to, to Kelly and to Amy was, what has the city done besides ask the sheriffs to do something? I have been asking Amy for a year for more signage in the park. I have asked them to put signs on the, on the, that pathway so the kids don't ride, they ride there every day. Nothing has been done. And when I talked to Juliette at the park and her children, her daughter and some other kids that were there, they told me, they talked to the Sheriff's Department, different deputies that have, you know, approached them. The sheriffs don't even know the rules. Some deputies tell them you can't ride in the park, period. Some tell them you can't, you can ride on the pathway, but not on the grass. Some tell them you can ride wherever you want. So even the Sheriff's Department doesn't know the rules, and the city has done nothing to let the people know exactly what the rules are and the rules that need to be changed. There needs to be no e-bikes on sidewalks. And the fact that I've mentioned that I was almost hit twice, and by the way, I don't get any email going, oh, my gosh, sorry, that happened to you. I get total silence, except, I mean, Amy did write and tell me that you're going to make more signage. But I've been bugging her for a year for signage, and I mean, Ms. Lee, you will understand this, this is getting very close to willful neglect, because if you know there's a problem and you don't do anything about it, that's a lawsuit. Know about this. And I know you want to cut me off, but I have to just finish what I'm saying. We have to do something, and you need to go to my, I suggested this to Kelly, and you know me, I'm always sarcastic. Go to Michael's, buy some cardboard, buy a magic marker, get a stick, and put up some signage around the park, temporary or not, because something has to be done. And I don't want to penalize these kids. There are some good kids, and there are some bad kids. So I have an idea, and I just want to throw this idea out. And I, and by the way, I'm the reason that Juliette came tonight. I told her to come here tonight. We are of the like minds. We don't want to punish bad kids, and maybe peer pressure will help. I think.
Jennifer.
Let me just pitch my idea. Let me just.
No, but I'm telling you when to pitch your idea, because we have already brought this before. I don't know if you, you weren't at the.
No, I couldn't make it.
So we, we actually had it on the agenda, which would have been the perfect time to come and.
I know, but I couldn't make it.
Okay, well, that's fine, because we are continuing, and we are drawing up new legislation for the city. So all I can say to you is, because we can't discuss it tonight because it hasn't been agendized, but we are working on it. There are going to be Subcommittee meetings, there are going to be further City Council meetings, and we are going to change the regulations. So all of this is in the works, and I would encourage you to come to those meetings where we can have a, a back-and-forth conversation, which we cannot do tonight. No, Jennifer, I, I have to, sorry.
Well.
I have to shut you off, but we welcome you to come back when we can.
What if I can't come to that meeting?
Then put it in writing and send it to me or to Amy, but this is going to be a public discussion where everybody can come and talk about it.
Well, I love the fact that you've delayed doing anything for a year, but yet you're pushing me out from, from talking about.
We, we are not pushing you out, it's just that I cannot discuss it tonight because it violates the Brown Act.
I'm not asking you to discuss it. I wanted to pitch this one idea that I have.
Jennifer, I'm sorry, but I, I have to move on. Thank you.
You're always sorry, you don't do anything.
The next speaker.
Our next speaker is Jesse Kaplan.
Welcome.
Can everyone hear me? Good. Hi, everyone. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. First off, I want to begin by thanking the city for its leadership in banning gas lawn equipment. It's a meaningful step towards quieter and cleaner communities. A lot of other cities in California that have done the same thing, so I want to thank you guys for doing that as well. I encourage the Council to extend this progress by considering a broader ban on gas lawn care citywide. The noise pollution from these machines impact our quality of life and our environment, and transitioning to electric alternatives benefit both residents and workers. I can tell you from at least myself working at home, every single neighbor, every day, has vendors coming out with gas lawnmowers, and it's really hard to take calls when you just hear that. So I just, I wanted to see if there's a way to get the ball started, to ban it from personal use also. I don't, if there's a way to give some type of financial incentive to help folks who have to then put out the capital to purchase electric, that's a whole other story. But I know it is a cost consideration for vendors to have to drop all their internal combustion engines, go out and buy gas, I'm sorry, go out and buy electric. But regardless, I, I just think it would be better for our air, and it would just be a lot less noise pollution. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. And if you could leave your name and contact information with staff, they will get back to you on that.
So my wife, Deena, here, actually emailed every single one of you earlier today. You could probably disregard that because you're hearing it in person, but who in particular should I? Oh, okay. Copy that.
You got it? Great.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Do we have any other speakers?
There are no other speakers this evening.
All right. So now we move on to the Council Consent Calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. I will now defer to the Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor Sylvester. We have not received any written comments, nor have we received any speaker cards.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the City Council on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will now call for a motion in a second to adopt the consent calendar.
City Councilman Chris Anstead making a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Sorry. Did you want to say?
I apologize for interrupting. On, on item one, Steph's recommending.
Oh, that's right.
If we can pull that and bring that back at a future meeting, there needs to be some further review done on that, and I apologize for that interruption.
Okay. So minus item one, I call for a motion in a second.
City Councilman Chris Anstead, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception for, to pull item number one.
Mayor Pro Tem Wolf, I'll second.
And we have a roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wolf.
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester.
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you, you have a approval of five to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving on to public hearing, item number seven. Our next item is a public hearing to consider the adoption of ordinance number 25-480, adopting by reference the 2025 edition of the California Building Standards Code and the 2024 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, amending Articles Three and Eight of the Agoura Hills Municipal Code, approving a sequer exemption determination, and adopting Resolution Number 25-2119, making the findings that the amendments to the 2025 editions of the reference codes are reasonably necessary because of local climatic, climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. I will now open the public hearing, and I will defer to Building Official Lucas Quatch for the staff presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Member, City Council Members, and Members of the public. My name is Lucas Quatch, and I'm the city's building official. So about three weeks ago, at the last City Council meeting, the City Council introduced an ordinance number 25-480 for the adoption of the 2025 California Building Standards Code, along with local amendments, and set a public hearing for tonight, November 12, 2025. For tonight's presentation, staff will begin with a quick recap of the city's 2025 Building Standards Code adoption, review the key local amendments, and recognize the findings supporting the proposed ordinance and resolution, and will conclude with the summary and the recommendation. So as some may remember from the last presentation, the state of California adopts updated building standards every three years to maintain uniform construction standards and practices statewide. The 2025 edition includes 13 volumes covering everything from administrative provisions and building regulation to residential, energy, and fire safety standards. These updates take effect automatically. These updates take effect automatically on January 1st, 2026, regardless of whether they are formally adopted. However, local jurisdictions such as the city of Agora Hills may adopt amendments that are more restrictive than the state code if deemed reasonably necessary due to local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. So Agora Hills has proposed local amendments and the majority of them carry forward from the previous code cycles, ensuring continuity and clarity for both staff and the general public. These include administrative provisions that streamline service delivery and support efficient code application. Similarly, amendments to the grading permit processing provisions in Appendix J of the CBC are clarified to ensure administrative efficiency and consistent enforcement. From a technical standpoint, the city also continues the building standards amendments from the latest addition, including implementing wildland urban interface construction standard that required the use of ignition-resistant materials citywide to enhance community resilience against wildfire hazards. The city also continues its voluntary seismic retrofit provisions and, excuse me, seismic gas shut-off valve requirements are carried forward to enhance public safety, and the requirement for non-residential EV infrastructure standards is increased to CalGreen Tier One, Level One, to align with the city climate action and adaptations sustainability goals. The proposed amendments qualify under Assembly Bill 130 moratorium exemption as they pertain to home hardening, administrative efficiency, and standard equivalency to the current provisions. These ensure compliance with state law while preserving local authority. So the city's 2025 code adoption is implemented through ordinance number 25-480 and resolution These actions ensure that the city remain consistent with the most recent state building standards while maintaining critical local provisions tailored to the city of Agora Hills condition. Specifically, the ordinance adopt by reference the 2025 California Building Standard Codes as well as the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, which establishes minimum requirements for maintenance and occupancy of existing structures. Accordingly, it includes amending Article Three and Article Eight of the Agora Hills Municipal Code. And finally, the resolution adopt findings confirming that each of the local building standard amendment is reasonably necessary based on the city's unique climate, topography, and geology. Together, these legislative actions complete the city 2025 code adoption process and once they're filed with the California Building Standard Commission. To summarize, the proposed adoption of the California Building Standard Code ensure that the city remains consistent with the latest state standard that will take effect January 1st, 2026. It also continues local amendments necessary to address the city unique climate, geological, and topographical conditions. These actions are consistent with Assembly Bill 130, which restrict local modifications to residential building standards unless they qualify for specified exemption as mentioned in the previous slide. At this time, staff respectfully recommends that the city council adopt ordinance number 25-480 and resolution 25-2119, making express findings that the state code amendments are reasonably necessary because of local climatic, geological, or topographic conditions, and approving a sequoia exemption determination. This concludes the presentation. At this time, staff is available to answer any question that the city council may have.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to public comment, does any council member have any questions of staff? Seeing none, I will now defer to the secretary. Are there any public comments?
No written comments were received and no speaker cards were submitted.
Thank you so much. Does any council member have any further questions? Seeing none, I will now close. And I think, I'd just like to say for the general public that what we're doing is making sure that all our codes are up to date in layman terms, for those of you that couldn't follow all of that, because it was very complicated. So thank you, Lucas. Okay, I will now close the public hearing and we'll move on to deliberations. So I will start with Councilmember Anderson.
So I just want to thank you again for the phenomenal presentation that you did at our last meeting. You answered all of my questions and I'm happy to proceed.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein Lopez.
Yes, thank you for the excellent presentation. You know, if we don't do anything, we lapse to the state standards. And so what we're doing is ensuring that we're a little bit more conservative in some of our standards to accommodate the difficult climate that we live in. And so I appreciate that and I am also ready to proceed.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstead.
Yep, I think, I think everything's in line. One thing that I really like about it is also the EV infrastructure to meet our cap, which is something that we consider important and continually trying to get to. So I think that's great. And also the home hardening modifications as well is very important in our area. So I'm ready to move forward and adopt ordinance.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Echoing my fellow council members, questions were answered last meeting and I appreciate that we are going further than we need to. And this is another step to keep our residents and our community as safe as possible. So I appreciate that and it's needed and make all the findings ready to move forward. Thank you.
And I agree with all my fellow council members and I'd like to thank our staff for doing all the heavy lifting on this and explaining to us what it all meant, and for you to keep us up to date and current with everything that the state is regulating. So thank you so much. So I will now call for a motion and a second to recommend that the city council adopt ordinance number 25-480 and resolution number 25-2119, making express findings that the state code amendments are reasonably necessary because of local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions, and approving a sequoia exemption determination.
Councilmember Anderson, so moves.
Thank you.
I'll second. Deborah Klein Lopez.
Thank you. With the secretary, I will refer to you for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wolf.
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester.
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval of five to zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on, public hearing, item number eight. Our next item is a public hearing to consider the introduction of ordinance number 25-481, amending Article Nine to repeal and replace the ADU regulations in Section 9283. Amend related definitions in Section 9120 and amend Section 61005 to clarify short-term rental prohibitions and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. I will now open the public hearing and defer to Planning Associate Katrina Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, honorable council members. As mentioned, tonight's item is for an amendment to the city's ADU ordinance. So tonight I'll cover some of the history of the ADU ordinance and the purpose of the amendments, a short summary of what's changing, then I'll go into a little more detail about the proposed amendments to the ADU ordinance and then staff's recommendations. So the city's current ADU ordinance was adopted in August 25, 2021. After its adoption, the Housing and Community Development Department, or HCD, reviewed the ordinance and provided feedback to the city in 2023 and the most recently in 2025. Since numerous laws were passed by the state since the city's 2021 adoption, the city's ordinance includes several inconsistencies with state law. Some of the changes the state made related to height setbacks, owner occupancy, covenants and restrictions, and the number of units on multifamily lots. Most recently, the state passed SB 543, which included amendments to the existing state laws on ADUs and JADUs, which I'll detail later on in the presentation. And most recently, the planning commission adopted a resolution recommending that the city council approve the ADU ordinance. The proposed amendments would include a full repeal and replacement of the existing ADU ordinance, given the extensive formatting changes that distinguishes the application process, state-exempt ADUs and non-exempt ADUs. One reason for the change is to ensure that staff interpret and apply the code consistently with state law while also making the ordinance more accessible to the public. To stay consistent with state law, staff also proposes to amend definitions under Section 9120 as it applies to the overall zoning ordinance. And to ensure our short-term rental prohibitions still apply, staff proposes to make minor amendments to Section 61005 as well. So part of the proposed ordinance makes a distinction between state-protected ADUs and all other ADUs. Rather than listing every development standard for a state-protected unit in our ordinance, we're pointing directly to the section of state law that covers those standards. This makes things cleaner and also means if the state changes anything down the line, our ordinance will still hold up without having to do extra updates. Attachment three of the staff report summarizes what the state-protected units are, which essentially include, one, detached units of up to 800 square feet with four-foot side and rear yard setbacks on a single-family lot; two, conversion of existing space in a single-family dwelling, which can be a JADU if it's 500 square feet or less, and has its own kitchen and bathroom either in the unit or in the main residence. But if the converted space is more than 500 square feet, then it would be considered an ADU, which would still be state-exempt, but would have to maintain access exclusive from the main residence, which means the unit would need its own bathroom unlike the JADU. Existing accessory structures can also be converted up to its existing size. This also includes accessory structures that are fully demolished and reconstructed into an ADU with the same dimensions and location. Three, conversions of non-livable space such as attics or storage rooms within multifamily dwellings can be up to 25% of the existing number of standard units. Four, detached ADUs on existing multifamily lots can be up to eight units but cannot exceed the number of existing units. And if there's a proposed multifamily, they're also allowed up to two ADUs. If any of the proposed ADUs fall within these state-protected thresholds, then the city would not be able to regulate lot coverage, setbacks, equestrian, and architecture. For those units that do exceed state thresholds, including detached ADUs that exceed 800 square feet, the city has some authority to regulate those units. So we can require a minimum of a 10-foot separation between the main house and the detached ADU. We can also ask that the ADU be architecturally compatible with the primary home, meaning things like similar materials, colors, and finishes. When it comes to setbacks, the city can only apply its standard zoning requirements to the front yard. For the side and rear yard setbacks, the state rules still apply, which set them at four feet each. And finally, we can also require that the ADU meet the lot coverage requirements for the zoning district that it's located in. As far as the height requirements or regulations, the state requirements would apply to both state-exempt and non-exempt units. For detached ADUs, both on single-family dwelling lots and multifamily dwelling lots, the standard height is 16 feet, but ADUs on single-family dwelling lots can go up to 18 feet to accommodate the roof pitch so that it matches the pitch of the primary dwelling. For multifamily lots, detached ADUs can go up to 18 feet if the primary residence is multi-story or more than one level. And attached ADUs can go up to 25 feet. State law also changed its requirements on deed restrictions for ADUs. Originally, the city required covenants on all JADUs and ADUs 800 square feet or less. This is being changed to only apply to JADUs. The deed restrictions would include rental term restrictions of no less than 30 days. The unit cannot be separately sold from the primary, and a requirement for the owner to occupy either the JADU or the main residence unless the owner is a government agency, land trust, or housing organization. Part of this amendment also removes the city's current ability to limit the number of ADUs on a property if the lot is in a very high fire hazard severity zone and the street doesn't have two separate access points. In those cases, the director currently has the authority to conduct a fire safety review, which could require extra safety measures like additional parking, larger setbacks, or other design features to make sure the ADU can be built safely. However, HCD found that this process was inconsistent with state law since it adds a level of discretion that could restrict the construction of ADUs. Despite the change, the city will still be able to review through the building permit process, so fire and life safety standards will continue to be addressed there. One of the newest state laws, SB 543, also changes how we measure ADUs and JADUs. Right now, we measure by gross floor area, which includes everything within the exterior walls. Under the new law, we'll only measure the interior livable space, which means the overall structure of an ADU could actually be slightly larger than the measured ADU size since the measurement no longer includes wall thickness or other non-livable spaces. To ensure the rest of the zoning ordinance aligns with the ADU regulations and state law, the definition for accessory dwelling unit would be amended to clarify that these types of units are permitted on proposed or existing lots with either a multifamily or a single-family dwelling. The definition for junior accessory dwelling unit is being amended to clarify that a JADU must be within the existing single-family residence or the attached garage with a size limit of no more than 500 square feet of interior livable space. Lastly, the amendment includes a change to the short-term rental prohibitions. It currently restricts short-term rental units if the property has a recorded covenant or deed restriction. But since the state only allows the city to enforce deed restrictions on JADUs, the short-term rental prohibition is currently written would not apply to other state-exempt ADUs. So to ensure the city can still enforce a minimum rental term of 30 days for all ADUs, both deed-restricted JADUs and non-deed-restricted ADUs, we propose to modify the language to account for units that have general limitations imposed by any law, whether it's state, local, or federal. And I'd like to make a couple of changes to, some minor changes to Section 9283.2E, as seen on the slide, and to fix typos related to changes from gross floor area to interior livable space. Staff recommends the city council conduct a public hearing, waive full reading, and introduce ordinance number 25481, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Agora Hills, California, amending Article Nine zoning of the Agora Hills Municipal Code to repeal and replace the ADU regulations in Section 9283. Amend related definitions in Section 9120, consistent with state law, and amend Section 61005 to clarify short-term rental prohibitions, making a finding of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act and incorporate the changes staff has proposed. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Before we move to public comment, does any council member have any questions of staff? I'm sure we do. Who would, Mayor Protem, do you want to start?
Thank you for the report. Can you please go to the slide about the interplay with SB Nine? Did I see Senate Bill Nine? So does this, what we're voting on tonight, does this have any impact on how SB Nine could be implemented? Or if SB Nine goes, since SB Nine's in effect, a lot could be split and then there could be the ADU and JADU on each lot? Does this update have any impact on that?
No. So SB Nine's actually just separate from state ADU law, but what you were mentioning about the lot split, so the difference between SB Nine between, if you split the lot, you can only have two units regardless of the type, whether it be a primary, a JADU, an ADU. But as soon as you make that split, you can only have two units.
Oh, I, okay, thank you. I actually didn't realize that, but thank you. That answers my question.
Anybody else? Councilmember Klein Lopez.
Thank you. Can you tell me again, explain to me the- Can you tell me again, explain to me the removal of the discretionary fire safety review? It sounds like, if you can maybe give me an example of something that we were able to do that now we cannot do, like a certain situation? Because you're saying that there's still a regular, you know, review process for safety, life and safety and all this, but it sounds like we were able to discretionarily get a little bit more information about evacuation, or what exactly are we losing by having to get rid of the discretionary piece and only go to the objective review?
So, the previous language in the ADU ordinance, it actually had the language discretionary fire safety review, which is one of the comments that HCD made to us to specifically remove that language. So we have just maintained all of the objective fire safety standards, such as 10-foot separation between structures. So just using an example, let's say somebody proposed a new ADU on one of these one-way-in and one-way-out streets, as you can see on the screen. Previously, we had the quote-unquote discretion to, you know, make allowances based on a discretionary determination whether or not that ADU can be allowed, and HCD said, no, you have to remove that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Anstett.
I have a question also on that 10-foot setback. So, when I was reading the provisions, it says you're required to have the 10-foot separation for fire in the severe fire hazard zone areas. But if it blocks you from actually building the ADU, then that requirement goes away?
So the city can enforce the 10-foot separation as long as it doesn't preclude the construction of an 800-square-foot ADU?
So if I want to build an ADU on a lot that's, and I only have six feet that I can go away from my home in order to keep it on my lot and keep it within the four feet from the other lots, am I going to be able to build it or not? I'm just trying to understand.
You'd be able to build at least an 800-square-foot ADU.
How close can I come to the house?
I guess that would be, that would be dependent on what building and safety and fire would say.
There's discretionary review on our side?
It's not discretionary. It's in the actual building code. What you have to do as soon as you get closer than 10 feet, so I think, I believe it's eight feet, and Lucas can correct me if I'm wrong. As soon as you get to eight feet, you actually have to start doing fire safety walls, so you have to change what the actual material of the wall is. So it's not, it's still ministerial, it just lives in the building code, and it's health and safety-related. So essentially, the closer you get to each other, the thicker firewall you have to have, and the more thing, more hoops you have to jump through.
And that wasn't, was that changed, or was that in the original ADU? Because I couldn't, it wasn't underlined, so I didn't think it was changed. I couldn't tell if it was added, or was that already in?
We had the 10-foot separation requirement already in the ordinance, and we changed it to add the clause at the end saying unless it physically precludes an 800-square-foot ADU, because it was a request from HCD.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to pull a lawyer trick, which is, you never ask a question you don't know the answer to, which I don't always do. But Robbie and Katrina, thank you so much for getting on the phone with me and helping walk through this very, very complicated, and honestly, in some ways, sad ordinance that I wish we didn't have to pass the way that we have to pass it. So the question I'm going to ask, which I asked you guys and you helped me understand, is when I was looking through this, it, what made, I completely understood what we were doing with 9283 and 9283.1 and 9283.2, because those were all about, and Katrina, I loved how you described it in your presentation, those are the state-protected ADUs. So for those, it's just, if you meet any of those four that you described, you just get a fast pass, and so that all made sense to me. And then it was this 9283.3, all other ADUs. And I got a little excited, thinking like, oh, okay, so this is where we get to have some control about this. Like we, and so the question is, for those non-state-protected ADUs, do we get full control or about what, what percentage of this ordinance is required by other state laws? And the interpretation from HCD?
Percentage-wise, I'd say we'd have less than 30% ability to enforce our own regulations. The ordinance essentially pushes the limit on what we can regulate, which includes some architectural features, including lighting fixtures. We can enforce lot coverage as long as it doesn't preclude an 800-square-foot ADU, front yard setbacks, setbacks within the Old Agora District, and horsekeeping.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. And listening to what all my fellow council members said too, really, most of this is just being dictated to us by HCD, correct? I mean, we can't say, no, we're not going to do that. We have to come into compliance.
That's correct.
So we really don't have much choice here. Okay. Thank you. I will now defer to the secretary. Do we have any public comments?
No written comment were received, and no speaker cards have been submitted.
Thank you very much. There being no further questions, I will close the public hearing. So we'll now move on to deliberations. Who would like to start?
I'm happy to, just because it's a direct follow-up to the question that I asked Katrina and Robbie, which is, I am very proud of the city of Agora Hills for doing what we can to protect our residents' values, the design standards, the setbacks, the equestrian play, the equestrian to the extent that we are able to do it. I appreciate that we are taking a really close look. And honestly, I'm proud of us for having submitted reg, I don't know if proud's the right word, but it's a sign of how much we care about keeping Agora Hills in the spirit of Agora Hills, that we have two previous ordinances that HCD came back and said, no. I mean, this shows that we really are trying very, very hard on behalf of our residents to be able to reflect our values. So I'm thrilled that we're able to keep the architectural standards and the setbacks, or the 10-foot in-between and these various things. And I can absolutely make all of the findings. I wish that we weren't in the position that we are. We are in the position that we are, and that we're doing what we can to influence and control to protect Agora Hills.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein Lopez.
Thank you. I agree with my fellow council members' comments. I think in addition to the character and the preservation, obviously, the thing that is very concerning to me is the removal of the discretionary fire safety provision. And I do understand that we're not, it's not that we're throwing out all protections for, for building. That's not what this ordinance does. But the fact that we have staff that really understands our neighborhoods, understands the roads, the ins and outs, the evacuations, this and that, and that we, at one point, had some say and influence over additional density in those areas that may or may not happen, the fact that that is slowly being chipped away, that our input is being chipped away, is certainly disappointing and a long battle that we've been having with, with state legislation that we feel is really harming some of our very high fire hazard severity zones. So, you know, I do obviously believe that the law will still allow, the laws and the reviews will still allow for safe building, but the fact that we can't go above and beyond in making sure of a little bit extra review is disappointing. But as my fellow council members have pointed out, this is not something that we have much to say over. We have to follow state laws. And so with that, I thank you for your, your thorough review of, of our original ordinances and resolutions, and I absolutely can go forward with the, with the vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Anstett?
Yeah, I think a lot of the changes make sense. I mean, some of the changes were on the J-ADU, like it can't be, you can sell off the J-ADU, which is part of the house, basically, and try to make money on, on doing that and have a separate owner of that. Also, we have, we kept the provisions in there concerning the 30-day rentals for both the J-ADU and the ADU, and I think that's good as well, because we were trying to protect more of the residential feeling here in Agora Hills. And so I think that's good. And I think overall, most of the provisions for the fire safety are, are still held in here, even though there's some, just, I don't know if I'd say some discretion, but there's some, I guess, onus on Agora Hills to make sure that we enforce when people do build closer than the 10 feet, that they are using the right materials and all that to be fire-resistant and to be, to still protect the residents in there. So I think I'm ready to move forward with that.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Well articulated by the council members, and those are really thorough report. As a council member, you know, we can pontificate how the state is chipping away at local control and all that, but it is the state law, and so we need to be compliant. And so I appreciate the staff's work to put this very, very intricate document together to maintain as much, I guess, control over this process as possible. And so I can make all the findings. I do have concerns, like I did previously on our other ADUs, about parking, but that's not within this jurisdiction of what we're voting on tonight. So we're going to be up to state law, and we need to do this, and so I can make all the findings and move forward.
Thank you. And I just follow on from what everybody has said this evening. It's a pill that we have to swallow. So I can make all the findings too. So I will now call for a motion and a second to consider, to introduce Ordinance Number 25481, and amending Article 9 to repeal and replace the ADU regulations in Section 9283, amend related definitions in Section 9120, and amend Section 61005 to clarify short-term rental prohibitions, and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. Do I have a?
Mayor Protam Wolf, and I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Second?
City Councilman Chris Anstett, sir.
Thank you. I'll now defer to the secretary.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstett?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval of 5 to 0.
Very much. So, public hearing item number nine. Our next item is a public hearing to consider the introduction of Ordinance Number 25-482, amending the Agora Hills Municipal Code to consolidate all protected tree regulations into Section 9657, and updating the city's protected tree regulations to streamline permit processing, prioritize the retention of individual trees, incentivize the planting of new protected trees, and include the California sycamore and the southern black walnut as protected trees, and make other amendments and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. I will now open the public hearing and defer to the Assistant Planning Director, Robbie Nessavich.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight with me, I also have our city arborist, Ryan, from Dudek. And tonight, we are going to be talking about the protected tree ordinance. So to start, I'm going to be giving you a background of the ordinance, followed by an overview of the established goals, objectives, and planning principles. And lastly, we will go over the proposed regulatory changes and staff's recommendation. An amendment of the oak tree ordinance is a city council goal for this fiscal year. The amendment was prompted by a few shortcomings of the current regulations pertaining to enforcement, cost burden on single-family homeowners, permit timelines, and the desire to include additional tree species to our list of protected trees. To ensure that staff implemented the vision of the city council, we proposed a set of goals and objectives for the ordinance called the planning principles. The planning principles were brought to the Land Use and Economic Development Subcommittee, or LUEDC, on June 10, 2025, and to the full city council on July 9. The city council was supportive of the planning principles, as I'm sure you know, as presented, and they were included as an attachment to your report. A couple months later, on September 29, the draft ordinance was presented to the LUEDC during a public meeting. Minor changes were recommended by the LUEDC and were incorporated into the ordinance. Most recently, the ordinance was reviewed by the Planning Commission at the regularly-scheduled meeting on October 16, and they recommended approval of the ordinance. During the meeting, the Planning Commission recommended the city council consider reducing or eliminating fees associated with general pruning permits, but it is worth noting that the fee schedule would be updated by resolution shortly after the adoption of the ordinance, so any potential changes in fees would be decided at a later date and would not affect the ordinance language. So on the next few slides, I'm just going to be going over some of the planning principles and the language that was included in the ordinance in order to accommodate those planning principles. The first principle aimed to ensure consistency throughout the ordinance and to consolidate all protected tree regulations. All protected tree regulations would now live in Section 9657, and standards for individual types of tree permits will now be reviewed based on the type of activity to streamline the review process for simple requests not associated with development. The ordinance would create three different types of tree permits. The first is general tree, tree permits, which is associated with work that is not routine maintenance and will not jeopardize the long-term health of the tree, or tree removals that are not associated with development or emergencies. For reference, the vast majority of general tree permits are pruning requests, but could also involve removal requests if a protected tree is impacting existing infrastructure. The second type of tree permit would be the hazardous tree permits, which are situations in which a protected tree is considered hazardous and must be removed for safety purposes. And lastly, we have development tree permits, which are new construction projects that will impact or have the potential to impact protected trees. If you now would like to know what the submittal requirements and regulations are for a specific type of tree permit, you would now be able to look at a single code section to see all the applicable regulations. This clarity will increase the likelihood of compliance and reduce back-and-forth interactions between staff and the applicant, streamlining the permit process. The second planning principle aims to give more incentives to property owners to maintain protected trees, as stringent regulations sometimes serve as a deterrent for the planting of new protected trees. The ordinance tries to address this issue directly by adding a planting incentive section, 9657.8. A few incentives are provided directly in the ordinance. The first is registered plantings. So under the ordinance, any property owner that willingly plants new protected tree species on their property may now register those trees with the city. And the registered plantings on file with the city would not be subject to the protections of the ordinance. New developments may not register any required plantings that they have to put in as part of the development. The second incentive is that the ordinance allows the director to waive fees for variances and modifications of zoning requirements when needed to avoid a protected tree. So an example of this would be, let's say there's a landmark tree directly in the middle of the property, and the applicant needs to shift the building a few feet forward, but encroaches a few feet into the front setback. Under the current regulations, we would require them to submit a variance or a modification to essentially encroach greater into that front setback area, which actually disincentivizes avoidance of that landmark tree. So essentially, we're just trying to make it easier by reducing costs to do what we're trying to incentivize applicants to do, which is to avoid protected trees. And then separately from the incentive section, processing procedures were streamlined for general tree permits, and the ordinance allows for the creation of a certification program for tree care companies. And this would allow tree trimming companies or arborists to attend trainings to be certified by the city for free, and in return, the city would maintain a list of certified companies to make available on the city's website and distribute to potential applicants. Additionally, two other things is that, that staff aims to do shortly after the adoption of the ordinance is the establishment of a tree grant program and the offering of landmark- of the ordinance is the establishment of a tree grant program and the offering of landmark tree plaques. These two items did not need to be located in the ordinance, which is why they're not directly addressed in the proposed legislation. Planning principle number 3 aimed to create more straightforward enforcement provisions. The update creates objective enforcement language and processes and maintains strict penalties for violators of the ordinance. Violators would still be subject to mitigation requirements, restitution in certain instances, and increased permit fees to cover code enforcement time spent, which would be adopted separately by resolution. Planning principle number 4 aimed to address the issue that many property owners have when mitigation requirements are replacements are required, which is that there is often not enough space for the trees. Particularly with the new fuel modification and tree spacing requirements, there needs to be an option for off-site replacement plantings. The ordinance allows a mitigation fund to be established, and we plan to adopt in lieu fees via a separate resolution so that the city can pay for tree replacements through our tree grant program or on city-owned property. Planning principle number 5 aims to create clear, concise, and practical regulations while maintaining or increasing protections. To implement this principle, staff updated our method of analyzing impacts to protected trees. As explained in the staff report, the ordinance proposes to calculate removal impacts based on the diameter of trees removed, rather than estimating the canopy and root zone impacts. Not only is this method more precise in terms of measuring exact impacts, but it also helps to incentivize the use of existing protected trees in a development, as the current regulations, in a sense, punish property owners for any and all encroachment into the tree protection zone. Further, it incentivizes the retention of larger, more mature trees, as their removal would greatly impact the 10% removal limit. In contrast, scrub oaks are now the only protected species that will actually be regulated using the square footage of removal, and this is because this species is actually a shrub, and measuring impacts based on its trunk diameter would not be possible or The last planning principle, number 6, aimed to protect additional species of protected trees. The city's arborist, Ryan, put together a list of native trees to consider based on the following factors: likelihood of impact from development, frequency in natural setting, frequency in urban landscapes, ecological area, water usage, potential size at maturity, and consistency with the city's climate action plan. Based on these factors, staff recommended that the City Council consider adding the California sycamore and Southern California black walnut to the list of protected trees, and the City Council was supportive. So now that I've gotten through all the planning principles, I'm going to briefly go over some of the other regulatory changes that we haven't already discussed. The first is individual removal thresholds. The current regulations have a 20% removal threshold for canopy or root zone impacts before a property owner or developer has to mitigate for the tree. The new regulations allow a developer to encroach greater than 20%, as long as the encroachments are minor in nature and would likely not impact the long-term health of the tree. In these instances, the owner would be required to establish a monitoring program for up to five years to ensure the long-term health of the tree. This essentially allows flexibility and helps to ensure that developers are not incentivized to remove trees that could otherwise be retained. The next new regulation proposed is scaling mitigation based on the diameter of trees removed and the size of trees removed. The current regulations do not differentiate between a 2-inch tree removal and a 47-inch tree removal. Both would require the same amount of mitigation under the city's code, which does not capture the tree's actual environmental value. Further, if a variance is approved for more tree removals, we are going to be requiring larger tree replacements and more tree replacements, depending on the proposed removal percentage. This will allow the city to require more mitigation for more impactful projects. Approval authority. Currently, the tree permit approval authority lies with either the director or the Planning Commission based on the number of proposed removals. In practice, it is more logical to require an administrative permit for hazardous tree removals or general tree permits, as they typically only involve pruning or the removal of trees that are becoming hazardous or encroaching on existing infrastructure. For the development tree permits, authority should lie with the established decision-maker for the development permit. For a development permit that requires Planning Commission approval, the Planning Commission would be the approval authority. For very minor developments that don't meet the threshold for Planning Commission approval or other state-mandated ministerial projects, the director of community development would be the approval authority. Mitigation for general tree permits. Mitigation is remaining at 1 24-inch box per tree removed, and this is because general tree permits would only be approved in instances where the tree is encroaching into existing infrastructure. We don't want to require excessive mitigation for these trees, as it may significantly burden single-family homeowners that have no choice but to remove the tree. Some exemptions were added to the ordinance. We already discussed registered plantings, but we are also increasing the protection threshold from 2 inches to 6 inches. This is because a 2-inch tree really doesn't provide significant environmental value. Staff did a review of other cities' tree protection regulations and found that 6 inches is a good sweet spot for a tree that is starting to provide environmental value and is worth And then lastly, we have some special types of development permits that require administrative review, such as Senate Bill 9 projects and affordable housing projects. The existing regulations for those projects have been moved to Section 9657 and have been slightly adjusted to align with our new requirements. For environmental review, this ordinance is exempt pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15308, or Actions by Regulatory Agencies for Protection of Natural Resources, because it is an action taken by a regulatory agency to assure the maintenance, restoration, enhancement, and protection of the environment. While the ordinance allows for a relaxation of processing procedures for general tree permits, it will not result in a relaxation of mitigation requirements, and it will not result in a relaxation of standards, leading to environmental degradation. This ordinance protects two additional native tree species, and mitigation requirements for the removal of protected trees are generally increasing, particularly for removals of large trees and heritage trees that provide the most value to the environment. New incentives are also being provided to promote the enhancement and restoration of the city's native trees. So with that, staff recommends the City Council conduct a public hearing, waive full reading, and introduce ordinance number 25-482, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Agoura Hills, California, amending the Agoura Hills Municipal Code to consolidate all protected tree regulations into Section 9657, and updating the city's protected tree regulations to streamline permit processing, prioritize the retention of individual trees, incentivize the planting of new protected trees, include the California sycamore and Southern California black walnut as protected trees, and make other amendments and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. And with that, staff is now available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. So another big one to discuss. Before we move on to public comment, does any council member have any questions for staff? Mayor Protem.
I have two questions. The first one is, can you explain moving from 2 inches to 6 inches? What does that mean? That you're able to now remove a tree easier because it's 2 inches in diameter as opposed to 6 inches?
It wouldn't reach that protection threshold until the actual diameter of the trunk was 6 inches. So right now, a 2-inch in diameter trunk is about a sapling. So it really doesn't provide any environmental value at that point. So increasing that threshold to 6 inches just ensures that we're starting to protect trees that are actually providing value to the environment.
Won't the 2-inch tree provide value to the environment once it reaches 6? I mean, how was that selected? Is kind of, because other cities have done it?
Yeah, that's correct. We did a review of other ordinances nearby, and it kind of ranged from anywhere from 4 inches to 10 inches. And so 6 inches is on the lower end, but it, you know, that's kind of right where you're starting to see environmental protection be warranted.
And so that's pretty standard, is what you're saying?
Yeah. 2 inches is not a lot to protect.
Right. So, okay, thank you. That answers that first question. The second question is, is there any way to include in this, and I don't know, I don't think it would be in the code, but maybe on like the website, to incentivize for mitigation or replacement trees to be like somewhat locally sourced, as opposed to like a tree coming from Lancaster or from Santa Barbara, where there's different climates that it's lived in, and then we bring it in, and so maybe provide like vendors or nurseries that are within a certain 30-mile zone, so that trees will have a better chance of success?
Absolutely. So we actually have an existing contract with West Coast Landscaping, and so the intent is to update our current contract with that firm to provide replacement plantings, and they already provide trees from Bothing Tree Nursery, which is in Woodland Hills, Devil Mountain Wholesale, which is in Fillmore, and Norman's Nursery, which is also in Fillmore. So we do already source them locally.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. That's actually good to know. So, all right, I appreciate that. Those are my questions.
Any other council member? No? Thank you. I will now defer to the secretary.
No written comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted.
Thank you so much. Does any council member have any further questions? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing, and we'll now move on to deliberations. Who would like to start?
Since I was on the committee with you, I'm happy to start.
Yes.
Well, first of all, thank you for all of the presentation and all of the information. This is something we've been working on for a while and that we have seen a few times, especially for those of us on the committee. Very important goal for this council, and so happy to be at this point where we can move on it, because it is a really important part of our, what makes Agoura Hills, of who we are. It really defines us as the gateway to the Santa Monica Mountains. So very important goal. Just want to say really excited I am, how excited I am to be here. One of the things that, the reason why this came to be a goal is because of the burdens that it was placing on homeowners that were ending up, as they say, cutting off your nose despite your face, because our requirements were so difficult and costly that it was actually disincentivizing homeowners from planting trees or working hard to protect their trees. And so I really appreciate that this ordinance is coming to us with those planning principles in mind, because we have to be focusing on the carrot and not the stick, because the stick does not ultimately protect our oaks, I think, our protected trees. So really appreciate that we're moving to the incentives rather than penalizing particularly homeowners with protected trees, and really helping them with the cost of maintaining those trees, because we want, again, to incentivize them to keep their trees pruned and healthy and part of our community. So I, a couple of the things that I'm really happy to see in here is, you know, the certification of the tree pruning companies. We vet them in advance. We give those names to our residents, and we can feel comfortable that these are companies that understand the goals that we have in mind and ensure that those trees are going to be taken care of. I'm always up for streamlining, you know, streamlining cleaning up, making things faster for you and for our residents, so definitely happy about that. And then, of course, adding the trees, that's been a goal for years and years. It started back when I first got on the council, and we were looking at the North Area Plan, going through the unincorporated, or going through LA County and our unincorporated neighbor areas, and they were protecting all of these different kinds of trees that really were essential to our biodiversity that we have in the Santa Monica Mountains. And so the fact that we are incorporating that, and we vetted those species and figured out which ones are good for our cap and aren't too water-intensive and are native and all of those things, you know, really happy to add a few additional species into this ordinance. So, you know, to Mayor Protem's point, it's a delicate balance to, because what we don't want to do is make, we don't want to make landscaping and changing someone's home too difficult, because then they're not incentivized to even plant oaks or protected species. So it is a delicate balance where we have to not be, we can't penalize, we can't overregulate, but also protect. And I think this ordinance hits those marks where it's kind of win-win-win, because we're easing the process for homeowners, we're hopefully lowering some of the costs for homeowners, but we're also increasing the protections and some of the mitigation goals that we have. So to me, it's a good balance. We've been working on it for a long time. Really want to thank you for all your hard work. Anxious to hear what my fellow council members have to add to all this, but I'm definitely ready to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was also on the subcommittee, so I agree with everything my fellow council member said. And also, I'm glad we're expanding the protected trees, because with the new Zone Zero regulations that are coming in, protected trees are one of the few trees that the Zone Zero won't apply to, so that they'll be safe. And I wouldn't worry about the 2-inch saplings, because like, I know in my garden, suddenly a tree started sprouting up next to another tree, but it was closer to my chimney, so it had to go anyway because of the Zone Zero regulations. So I think when little saplings spring up, unless they belong, that they should be able to be just removed before they create other issues. So I know you want everyone to stay, but they will be fine. So yes, I can make all the findings for this. So who else would like to go?
I'd be happy to go. So I was thrilled when we were looking at these principles. I too agree with my fellow city council members that we need to be incentivizing as opposed to the stick, because we end up with fewer trees. So I had a top five, although Debbie, after your, or council member Klein Lopez, after your comments, I've got a top six of my favorites in this ordinance. So one is the plaques. I think that's, you know, to recognize folks for doing it, I think is brilliant. It's such a low-cost way to help folks. I too am a huge fan of streamlining the process. I too love the certification and the training. You know, people don't want to engage in bad behavior, so we're going to help them engage in good behavior and help folks know. I love the idea of the free trees that folks, so those of you listening, free trees soon to be coming to Agoura Hills. And five on my list was the encouraging the retention of protected trees, like that whole thing around when you have a development and we have incentivized them to take out trees that we are, and it's far too complicated for me to fully understand, but what I get out of this is we are going to help make sure that those older trees are actually kept in, because those are the ones that are most worthy of protection. So I'm so glad that we're doing that. The six I would add is, yeah, I am excited about adding the California sycamore and the California black walnut, too. And I didn't even realize it was going to have this added benefit of protecting it from Zone Zero. So fantastic. I too can make all the findings.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstead.
I think the main thing for me was the fact that when they went through to make these changes, that they are using the planning principles. And I think the planning principles that were included all make sense, and I like the fact that we're trying to make it easier for the owners here in Agoura Hills to be able to address issues when they have them. So I think I definitely can make all the findings, and I'm ready to move forward. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Well said, again, tonight by the council members. I appreciate this going through the LUEDC committee. I appreciate the Planning Commission going through this, the staff's work on this, and it's kind of checking a lot of boxes where it's going to help residents' pocketbook and help our environment. And so when you can do both of those, I think that's a win-win. I'm happy that it's streamlining. I'm thrilled that we're adding two more species, because we understand the science of how important native species are for fire protection and biodiversity. I can make all the findings and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I will now call for a motion and a second to introduce ordinance number 25-482, amending the Agoura Hills Municipal Code to consolidate all protected tree regulations into Section 9657, and updating the city's protected tree regulations to streamline permit processing, prioritize the retention of individual trees, incentivize the planting of new protected trees, including the California sycamore and the Southern black walnut as protected trees, and make other amendments and making a determination of exemption under the California of exemption under the Californian Monumental Quality Act. And we waived a reading, correct?
Sorry. I was going to just suggest if you wanted to move staff recommendation because that encapsulates everything they want you to do.
Oh, you could have saved me that at the beginning.
I would love to make a motion to...
Anyway, do I have a motion and a second?
I would love to make that motion, Deborah Klein Lopez.
City Councilman Chris Anstead, second.
I'll call on the secretary for the roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval, five to zero.
Okay, now we move on to a discussion. Action item number ten. This is regarding amending the Agora Hills Municipal Code to increase city council salaries. I will now defer to city manager Nathan Hamburger for the staff presentation.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and council members, the item before you this evening is to discuss the changes that are outlined in Senate Bill 329, which amended the government code to create a formal standardized scale for California city council member salaries. The goal behind this was to address the ability to keep pace with inflation and in our specific case in Agora Hills, this has not changed from a $300 per month salary stipend since 1986. And it varies from city to city, some cities have updated it multiple times since their incorporation, others have looked at different inflation and so they have done it, others have done nothing. So, it, it varies and this helps create a standardized formula. It does set a maximum monthly salary for city council members based on a formula that's calculated by population of the city. And so, with Senate Bill 329, for our city's population, it's up to 35,000 and the maximum monthly salary would be $950. So, our city has, in 1986, updated till three, like I mentioned, $300 a month, so it'd be a change of up to $650 going to that, that full 950. What we had asked for you this evening is to discuss the item amongst yourselves, provide staff direction. Senate Bill 329 does require that the city council provide multiple opportunities for public discussion and transparency reasons of any changes that are proposed. So, if staff is directed to bring back an ordinance for consideration, we would have another hearing on that. The other options in front of you this evening, you could do nothing and leave it as is, or you could have a salary, monthly salary amount that is up to or under the 950. So, it could be any number between 300 and 950 if you decide to do that. So, with that, I will conclude my staff report and be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Does any council member have any questions of staff? Seeing none, um, there, is there a public comment on this? There can be, is, has anybody submitted anything?
Mayor Sylvester, no written comments have been received and no speaker cards have been...
Okay, thank you. All right, does any council member have any further questions? Seeing none, um, so now we can go into discussion and I'd like to start this time. I'm the one that asked for this to come forward, I actually asked for it to come forward last year and for reasons, it didn't make it, and I think it's really important that we discuss this. I think this, we have been set at the same salary since 1986, that is before some of our council members were born. And I think, I think that council members serve a, a real purpose in this city and I want to encourage future members of our community to run for city council. Some people don't do it because it's a huge time commitment. Some of us are willing to do that, others can't, others may consider it if they felt they were being compensated for their time at, at a more rational level. So, I personally think it should be the full 950, everybody else gets their cost of living adjustments every year and I don't see why the city council should be any different. So, I feel very strongly about this, but I'm open to everybody else's input. Who would like to go next? Nobody?
Just looking at adjusting for inflation, in 1986, $300 had the purchasing power in the United States of $886. So, I just find that interesting and I appreciate the comments you made about, you know, adjusting for inflation. So, I, I am comfortable with the $950 amount.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstead.
This is really hard, um, I, this does take a whole lot of time and certainly inflation, I mean, I love council member Wolf, or Protem, Mayor Wolf, your comment about the buying power, so the 300 is effectively $950. And Mayor Sylvester, I couldn't agree with you more about how much time and especially that you put in, like there is not an event that happens in Agora Hills that you, that you are not going to. All of that said, I, none of us are doing this for the money, like I, many people know I have a day job and I have to have a day job. Thankfully, even with these, I, I, I'm lucky to be an empty nester and so I'm able to spend that extra time doing it, but it, but $950 wouldn't compensate me for this. It's not, it's not for the money, which is not to say that city council members don't deserve and it wouldn't make sense to have an increase. My concern around this in this moment, and city manager Hamburger, you said we have two options, we may have three, or in my mind, there's perhaps a third, which is hold off on this conversation until, or hold off on an ordinance until we're in better financial times. I remember those budget goals and how difficult it was for us to make those really difficult cuts and make those decisions and we're in some of the hardest financial times we've been in as a city. So, I think your arguments are absolutely valid. I wouldn't be opposed at some point, but I would, I, I am concerned about going forward with a salary increase in this moment.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Klein Lopez?
I'm being stared down. I agree with you, this is very awkward, I think it's very awkward that a, a council has to dis, discuss its own salary, um, just puts us in a very difficult situation and I agree that nobody's sitting in this seat to make money, right? Like, no one, no one's sitting here to get rich, whether it's $300 or 950, we put in a lot more work than either of those numbers are valued at and, and also, you know, we do it for other reasons, we do it for the love of our city, we do it for the love of service, um, and so it really isn't about the money. That said, to your point, Madam Mayor, I would hate to discourage people from running because it's just an added burden for them. You know, when I worked for the state government, I would have to take vacation time to attend committee meetings that were during nine to five because I'm pay, I was being paid by the taxpayers of California, so I couldn't use that time to then serve the city of Agora Hills. So, I not only wasn't getting paid very much, but I was actually taking a pay hit, I was actually taking a pay cut because of course it burns up all your vacation time and so I would have to pay to go, out of my pocket, to go to city council meetings. So, I'm torn on this because on the one hand, I agree that you're, we're not in it for the money, to me, there isn't that big of a difference in terms of, you know, of the, of the salary increase, but at the same time, you know, I don't want to discourage particularly younger people from running for office because it's just that much more of an added burden for them, particularly people born after 1986 who are trying to, you know, raise a young family. So, I'm really torn, uh, I, I don't, if we do go up, I, I don't know that we have to be at the top. We're, we're a small city, we've never been at the top of these kinds of things, uh, you know, so maybe we meet in the middle somewhere. Those are my thoughts, I'm, I'm open to any of it, but those are my thoughts, so anxious to hear what, what everyone else has to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstead.
I think I have some questions before I answer this, I think, for the city manager, I think that he might be the one to be able to answer the question. So, when I was reading it, there was a couple of things that, uh, and I should have probably asked it earlier, but I just kind of thought more about it now, the, when it, the take effect, is it, because I thought I read in there that it doesn't take effect until the council member comes back up for reelection or something like that, I thought is what I read in preparation for the meeting today.
Yes, as I've read in the report, it does, there is a stipulation that it would not take effect until the next election. So, in this case, it would be December of 2026.
For all, and that'll be for all council members or not just the ones up for election or?
It would, yeah, correct, it would be for the, the entire council.
For the entire council. So, it would be in December of 2026, you said?
Yeah, the election is in November of 2026, so it would take effect after that, December, yeah, December, January, when it actually...
Right, a little over a year from now. So, it wouldn't hit the budget, it would hit the two-year budget cycle, but not this year's budget?
Um, if, if it, if this were to move forward, and I'm just taking the 950, it would be about, I think in the report we have about, about a $20,000, a little under $20,000 for, that would be an impact in the second year of this two-year cycle, because it's, it would be six months of that, that time period, that fiscal year.
So, I, I think, I mean, those were some of the questions, I, I think overall, I agree, first of all, number one is, um, I think every, all of us probably were a little bit surprised at the salary whenever, I mean, I, I didn't expect it to be a salary, this is not a, just like everybody else here, I have, a lot of us have other time jobs, but the $300 was kind of like, um, for all the work that this, this job does encompass, and we've been doing it, I've been doing it for seven years now, is that, um, I don't feel that is a fair compensation for, for the time that we spend and all that, and it is, I mean, I, when I talk to people about it, I say, really, it's, it's mostly, it's right now, $300 is really mostly volunteer time that we're giving, um, which I don't, a lot of ways I don't mind, but it does, it, it would be nice to be a little bit more fairly compensated for the time that we spend. And I, and not just us, again, it goes back to more the people that are on the city council going forward. And there has been costs that, uh, other costs that we've had to endure or take on that offset sometimes the salary. And, uh, so I just think that we should raise it, so my opinion is it definitely needs to be raised. I am actually, uh, councilwoman Deborah Klein Lopez had a point that I think I agree with, that, I don't know if I, it doesn't have to be at the 950, um, but I think it needs to be close, somewhere close to that. And, uh, so I think that's, that's where my feeling is right now, so I mean, maybe we can come to some agreement.
Yes. I, I think this has to be, it's continued to be discussed and so that we can come to a conclusion before the next election. I wish we'd done it last year, so it would have been in effect now, but it hasn't. But I, I really think, it may sound like a big jump, but this is a one-time jump because it hasn't been done for so long.
Correct.
And I think we all need to recognize that fact too, it's not like we're going, you know, from one year to the next year, it's 86 to 2026.
Right.
So, that's 40 years.
And I think the argument to the inflation, uh, the fact that $300 back to 1986 and now is...
Yes, and, and I'm, you know, just having to go out and buy clothes to attend to all these events and things, you know, it, it's part of the, you know, it's part of the job. So, I, I think that you're all entitled to it and I think I'm entitled to it, but I would like to get feedback also from our constituents, are we worth it? Do you appreciate what we do for you? So, what would be...
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
I, I don't think it's part of the bill, but is there, is there any, is there anything in the bill that allows a cost of living increase or do you have to go through a flat?
I don't know the answer.
You know, like a hard number, new ordinance every time, because it would be great if we just kind of were able to get to a number and then not have to do this again.
So, the bill does stipulate that if, so you can make this change now, there are no automatic increases, so you would have to come back anytime in the future that you do want to make any adjustments, adjusting for inflation. Now, it gives the parameters for the amount of inflation that you can increase for, but you do still have to come back for public hearings each and every time.
So, if I may, I've got two things then, actually, that gives just a question, and I suppose Candace, this might be a question for you, is, so what I'm hearing you say is each increase requires an ordinance, but could the ordinance then have a, could you pass a single ordinance that has a stepped increase, that says in, for the election in 2026, it will be X dollars, for the election in 2028, it'll be X plus Y, you get where I'm going, yeah. So, that, it is, I'm hearing the rule is it's a single ordinance.
Yes.
Yes, and, and so you would not be able to put in any automatic increases at all or future increases?
It's not an automatic in the sense of like cost of living, it is, the ordinance itself is giving the increase, a different increase each different election cycle.
My guess is no, right? Because the whole reason they wrote in these provisions about having it, you know, be reviewed at two meetings and having, not being able to do escalator clause, is that they want to make council salaries very transparent. And some may argue, okay, maybe at this point, if we do it in 2025, it's transparent now, but for people, you know, four, six, eight years from now, like, they don't know about it because it was essentially adopted in 2025. So, I think if you look at the legislative intent, I agree with, um, city manager Hamburger, that you probably need to bring it back with each ordinance, with each increase.
Okay, that makes sense. So, I would be curi, this is just for future, as we're having this conversation, I'd be really curious about the budget... Pick a couple of other neighboring cities so that we just have a sense of that, that would be information that would be useful to my decision-making.
I, I can at least provide some information that that question was previously asked. Westlake Village, currently their, their city council is compensated $300 a month, they do not know if they're going to discuss this item, this issue or not. Calabasas has updated the council salaries over the years, if I can just refer to my note, I believe it's up to $1,171 a month now, and that was done prior to the passage of Senate Bill 329.
And what's Calabasas's budget?
I don't know offhand, um, it's definitely larger than ours with the auto dealerships and they have some big box stores, a lot more commercial than we do, so it would be significantly larger than ours.
And, and they're also introducing, they would like to introduce a new sales tax to cover their budget.
Right.
We're not suggesting that.
City manager, city manager Hamburger, I, I appreciate those, that, and as we have this conversation, I, I would be interested in getting those concrete numbers.
So, I, I did ask that question offline, just so I could get an understanding, um, I'll just say this, there, Westlake Village and Agora Hills, we seem way under range. The larger cities around here, T O C M E seem to be kind of right in the range, um, Calabasas is a little over the max, it looks like, I think, for their, for their, uh, population. So, we're definitely out of whack with, uh, Agora Hills and Westlake Village are the two that seem to be out of whack with these numbers, if that's a fair, if that's a fair analysis of the numbers I got earlier.
I, I appreciate not going to the max, but maybe we could consider looking, the purchase, is purchasing power is $886, but another formula has it at, eight hundred eighty-six, and then the, for adjusting for inflation is 866, so that's of... So that's of nineteen eighty-six dollars of what three hundred dollars was. So I don't know, maybe we could consider looking at something like that and working our way either down or up, but tonight, are we looking for a number?
I think, no, we're just opening the discussion tonight.
Yes, if the direction is for staff to bring back an ordinance, it probably would be helpful to have a number so that we can have an ordinance that, then you can, because otherwise, we'd need to make that change in the ordinance and then bring it back additional times. So more than glad to, you know, willing to do that, but if you'd like to just have the ordinance presented the next time it comes before you, then a number would be helpful.
Okay. Does anybody want to name? I have named nine hundred and fifty. What is the feeling?
I will name eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, because to adjust for inflation for three, because I'm...
And bear in mind that this ordinance is going to be in place for another forty years.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but I'm also listening to you.
And, you know, we have an election coming up, and we want to encourage our residents to participate in this.
And I'm happy to go to nine fifty, but I'm also looking at the other council members, so I'm trying to get to a place where I think we can all agree on tonight. So I'm happy to do nine fifty, too, but I don't, I'm not...
I will be bold. So I will let you all set what you want to set.
I'll just throw out a number, nine hundred dollars.
Nine hundred.
So I, you guys know, I'm not sure that I'm in a position where I'm going to end up voting for an ordinance. I'm genuinely open-minded. My mentor taught me to be very open-minded. Mayor Sylvester, I very much appreciated your comment that you were curious to see if what our residents thought about this. Because, and I can't remember which council member, it's not about me. It really is about future council members. You've got a great point of this is going to be in place for another forty years. So I am genuinely open-minded, but I'm not tossing out a number because at this point, I'm not even sure that this is something that I support. I would certainly be much more likely to support it if we were not trying to do it to the max. I love you being bold, Mayor Sylvester. I'd support that. I would be much less likely to support it at the full amount, but I'm not sure that I'm going to support, and it would depend on, like, how low we go. So that's why I'm not engaging in the countering of the numbers. I would be really interested, though, in an outreach plan around this and asking folks' opinion. That would absolutely inform my decision, too. So, you know, Mayor, City Manager Hamburger, I heard you ask for direction on drafting an ordinance. Could we also include, if my other council members so desire, a direction on staff to do some outreach to our community to ask?
Well, then that's going to cost more money, too. So I mean, I think if we have it, I'm sure the Acorn is listening tonight. I'm sure that will be discussed in the public forum. I'm sure it will be discussed on other social media platforms. And we will, you know, make it an open, agendized item for people to come in and give their feedback.
I would second Mayor Protem's motion. That's what I would, that's the most I could do. I was actually thinking, when I was disgusted earlier, I was thinking of hopefully meeting in the middle, like, around five hundred, but I don't see any appetite for that. So I would say the, I would say an argument that I feel that I could, in a fiscally responsible way, make to my constituency is the purchasing power of three hundred dollars in 1986 would be eight hundred sixty-six or whatever number he came out with. I would be, I would be able to do that. But I'm also not thrilled with the discussion, so...
Well, it's an embarrassing discussion to have, but I'm happy to carry that.
It's fine, but, I mean, I think that's, I like where you're going with that, Mayor Protem.
So I think you should round it up to an even number.
Man, she's a...
What did you say?
Or round, or round it down. I mean, that's...
You said eight sixty-six?
Nate and I, Nate's running the numbers, because there's two different numbers. There's the purchasing power, and then there's adjusting for inflation. And I got a C minus in math, so I want to...
If you're looking at inflation, it would be, it's eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty cents, so it would, I mean, let's just round up.
To eight ninety?
So it'd be eight eighty-seven would be where the inflation would be, if that's...
Right.
That's where the, that's the question I was asking.
I think we should round down. I think an eight is much, much better than a nine.
So eight ninety?
No, I'm saying eight fifty.
So you're going under? He's saying eight eighty-six.
I'm saying go down to eight fifty.
Eight fifty. Anybody else going once, going twice? Eight fifty? Eight fifty? Well, I know we're not getting your input. Okay, that's...
Well, is this a vote?
No, no, he's going to draw.
I was going to say, it's just, this is just direction, so that provides direction for us.
And then we will have an open discussion with public comments, and I'm sure there will be a lot of public comments, so I welcome that.
Okay. We'll bring that item back to the council.
Okay, thank you.
So just to be, just to be clear, if the public came and said, and we would have the ability to change that number, that's a number that's going to go in, but we would be able to change that number during the discussion and just kind of restart the time clock?
Absolutely. The council will have discretion to do that.
Thank you. To be able to get that public input. Thank you.
Yes, definitely. Okay. So no formal action is required on this item. Are there any comments from staff? I'm sure there must be some.
Thank you, Mayor Sylvester. I will just mention that we're looking forward to tomorrow night. It's our evening with the author, Nita Proz. She's coming to us from the East Coast. She's here, she's in town. We're really excited. You can still get tickets online if you visit the website. The doors will open at five o'clock, and she will go onstage at six o'clock. And I'm thrilled to say that our very own Los Virginus Municipal Water District's Communication Manager, Ricky Clark, will be moderating the evening, so we are very excited. So we'll have a lot of good food from Blue Table and Cookie Cafe. We do have seats available, so please feel free to join us.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from staff? Any comments from city council? Councilmember Anstead.
Sure. I just want to, for one thing, recognize that yesterday was Veterans Day and thank all the veterans for all their service. I know there's a couple here. And so I really, I enjoyed Thousand Oaks at a ceremony in their park yesterday, and I enjoyed going with a couple Purple Heart recipients, and even a gentleman that was in World War II, a hundred years old, and was able to tell his stories and just as if he was fifty years old. So it was very nice to see, see that and to see a lot of the Thousand Oaks and other people from other cities come to recognize the veterans on Veterans Day. So just want to wish all the veterans happy Veterans Day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Anstead. And yeah, thank you for acknowledging Veterans Day and for your service and everyone in the city who served. I also want to comment the city staff and our mayor on just an incredible state of the city. Not only was it an incredible production and entertaining, but the spirit of inclusivity and making people feel welcomed was so special and moving. And I mean, just you guys knocked it out of the park, and thank you, Mayor, for bringing that forward, because that's something that doesn't get, you know, a lot of attention in these type of spaces. So thank you for your work on that. It was extremely powerful.
Two things. One, I just want to congratulate the staff on such a phenomenal senior Thanksgiving. And Mayor Sylvester, it was a joy to see you there, and I wandered around the room, and people were just so happy and grateful. And it was a full room, like, I barely could find parking in the parking lot. It was just amazing. So really, really nicely done. I'm so glad that we do that. And then, speaking of food, you heard our representative from Supervisor Horvath talk about food banks, and he mentioned LA Food Bank, which is a terrific, terrific food bank. And we have food banks here in the Conejo Valley who are absolutely seeing an increased demand because people are not getting their food stamps. My husband and I have been giving both Tamana and volunteering with Many Mansions. Those are just two of the places in the Conejo Valley that are helping the folks who are having troubles because of, they have troubles in life in general and with the shutdown and the cutting off of food stamps. So I just want to lift that up for our generous neighbors in Agora Hills.
And I'll just add, as we go into a food holiday, the food pantries are in even more demand so that people can prepare a holiday meal for their families. And I just wanted to say, because we don't have a council meeting during Thanksgiving week, to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you so much. I have several thank yous to make. First of all, I can't thank our staff enough for everything they did. I mean, and please give a special thank you to Jane Hoover for those incredible posters she created. I mean, I was in hysterics. To Ramiro, Amy, and Mary, and the entire team. I mean, my family couldn't believe it. They, we had such a wonderful evening. So thank you all so much for that. And I'd like to recognize the artists from Kindling Studios, which is run by Mariah Green. We had eight pieces sold during the event, which is amazing. And the artists were Alan Baker, Alex Rodriguez, Amanda Wold, Anne Marie Martinez, Ashley Penrod, Brandon Moreno. I actually bought his mirror because I thought it was so wonderful. Daniel Schneider, David Idell, Aaron Schlike, Kaylee Escobar, Lee Burke, Matthew J. Heathcote, Monica Hutchinson, Nick Russell, Ruby Logan, Shannon Dutta, and Shannon Murphy. And I would just like to remind all our residents that that art show continues through December, beginning of December. So if you'd like to go up and look at the art pieces, there are still some left that haven't been sold. And I encourage you to support Kindling Studios because they're doing amazing work with amazing people. And always onstage, Ramiro, thank you for finding that musical group. What a wonderful evening they gave us. So I'd like to thank you for doing that. And then today, again, another wonderful lunch, Thanksgiving luncheon. We had a beautiful harp player, and I have to say, that was so much nicer because everybody could listen to the music, but you could still talk to each other, too. So that was an excellent choice. And we had ASA up there, Chris. They were doing a raffle. They were selling off tickets for a five hundred dollar lunch at Baccacho's, so I hope some lucky person gets that. And just Mel and all the team were wonderful. And I have to apologize because I called her the wrong name, so now I'm just going to stick with Mel, and I won't get it wrong. So happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I hope you have a wonderful, relaxing time with your families. And with that, we're now going to adjourn. The regular city council meeting of November the 26th, 2025, has been canceled. Happy Thanksgiving. The city reorg and regular meeting will be held at 6:00 PM on December the 10th, 2025, in the council chambers of the Civic Center. The Civic Center is located at 30001 Lady Faes Court, Agora Hills, California. This meeting is now adjourned, and I look forward to handing this gavel over. Thank you.